Well, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everyone. Call the meeting to order at 7:00. And with that, we'll move on to item number three, public comment. Is there any public comments? Is there any public comments? Hearing no public comment. We'll move on to item number four, approved minutes of the May 21st, 2019 regular meeting. Have a motion to do so.
So moved.
Motion by Bob, second by Ann Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes five to zero. Item number five, first electors report, just a quick report tonight. I want to again thank all the emergency services personnel for their participation in the active shooter drill that was done on Sunday, May 19th. We had a very thorough debrief session and discussion about what was done well and what areas need improvement. We're planning another training event for the fall of 2019. Attended dedication of the new playground at Bungay School. This was an excellent collaboration between several town departments that will benefit not only the kids who attend Bungay School, but the close to 275 kids that attend our annual playground camp each summer. I had the honor of participating in the Seymour, Oxford, and Shelton Derby Memorial Day parades. It was truly a pleasure to be able to see so many people out celebrating those that gave their lives for our country. Met with Town Bond Council Bruce Chudwick to finalize the financing of the new touchscreens for the Board of Education, as you can see one over there, which we can't get to work. This will be a much-needed upgrade for our teachers across the district. Of course, for us, we're going to be able to have all of our presentations go on to that, and we can put different, whether it be documents or things, so everybody will be able to see it. So I think it's going to enhance the Board's selectmen meetings as well. Negotiations with the Seymour Police Union are continuing. Things are moving along nicely, and we hope to have most of the tentative agreements in place by tomorrow. I hope to have a full update for this board at our next meeting. And as a reminder, our schedule for the upcoming month has changed due to graduations and holidays. So as a reminder, our next meeting will be on Tuesday, June 25th, and then we will meet again on Tuesday, July 60. Okay, so with that, I'm going to close the first electors report. Rich is down with the Economic Development Commission. Item number six needs to be addressed by them first, and then we'll come back to us. So we're going to move past item number six temporarily, and we're going to move on to item number seven, which is the capital plan. So hand it out tonight is, or was, I should say, the capital plan moving forward. You know, we had some tentative discussions about this, regarding this about a month to six weeks ago, I'm not exactly sure when. You know, we gave some tentative approval that you were all comfortable with the direction we were looking to go with some of the items that we had down here. There's been a few slight changes to that, so I just want to go through, and then we'll ask for final approval at tonight's meeting. So, the first thing, there's no longer a mill rate stabilization account. That has been removed, as there's no longer a need for it. So it's been replaced by a turf replacement fund. As we know, we have the turf, costs about $500,000. The life of the turf is anywhere between 10 and 12 years, depending on how it's maintained. Our Public Works guys do a great job with that, so I'm expecting we'll get the, at least the 12 years out of that. So we need to start putting some money aside for that. As you can see, this would be the plan over the next several years to get that done. We'll be able to put away at least half, if not more, over time. But again, that's not a part of the capital plan, that's just part of our overall planning to go along with our road recon, our proactive road reconstruction and our building repair fund. You'll notice that I've kept fiscal year 2021 and '22 all flat with the anticipation that we'll be going out for a bond issue of $5 million with the work starting in the spring of 2020. It will probably take us two years to spend the full $5 million. So we'll keep that number flat, again, as a placeholder, and then start increasing that again in fiscal year '23. And then the building repair fund, we just finished up the $1.5 million in repairs to the police department, the library, and to Town Hall with the expectation that we may be looking at building a new community center. That is the only building that will need substantial repair. So assuming we're taking that out of the equation, $100,000 should be more than enough for the next two years to address our needs there. All right, so again, those are outside of the capital plan itself, but that was just more for review for the board. So if everybody can draw their attention to budget year 1920. The finance department software, we are in the place now where we're, as we're merging more and more with the Board of Education. We want to have one finance department software system for both the Board of Ed and the town. While we both use the same company, we are on different versions currently. We had initially gotten a quote of north of $100,000. However, between the finance director, the school business manager, the temporary one, our pool, and Bill Zawicki, we're looking at more of a cloud-based solution. The cloud-based solution will be substantially cheaper in initial upfront costs, but will have larger annual costs associated with it. So the $50,000 we had planned to break out over two years for about a total cost of $100,000, like I had said, Doug is projecting that it might only be $50,000. So I kept the $50,000 in, and then we left the second $50,000 as a placeholder for next year. Moving down to public works, the hot box reclaiming, the truck mobile lift system, and the scale with EZ Pass system, those are all requested priorities from the Public Works Department. The hot box reclaiming, I think we can all see the benefits of having that, the ability to make hot asphalt year-round. It's certainly a benefit particularly in the summer. It's substantially cheaper than using cold patch, which constantly needs to be reworked. The truck mobile lift system is something that's needed, that would allow them a little bit more flexibility in public works, particularly now that we've entered into that agreement for a second facility across town to store our equipment. And then the scale with EZ Pass system, that is for the transfer station. That will allow us to weigh the trucks that are coming in, and everything will be done electronically, so there'll be no more taking tickets like they had in the past. People essentially have an EZ Pass like they do for the tolls. They'll drive up, it'll read the scan on their vehicle, and all the information will be sent right to Public Works.
Do you want to get payments just in there?
Yeah, it'll all be attached, yep. And again, that'll be paid out over two years, it's about $80,000 to put into. Just looking out for fiscal year 2021, we do need a new gas boy system. That is how we dispense gas to police, fire, ambulance, and all the municipal vehicles. It's a card system. That is just for the software itself. We're going to have to start looking at tanks and pumps as well in the near future, too. All right, so skipping down to community service, this would be for the purchase of a new 30-passenger community service bus, handicap accessible. The current bus we have gets a boatload of use. It's about 12 years old, I believe now, so it's starting to run the course, get expensive to keep in place. This would allow community services to expand the use of the bus. They can go a little bit further than they have with this current bus. So we're going to break those payments up over four years. Generator, that is for a new generator for Town Hall. The one that we currently have here has performed admirably. We got that at an auction from the town of Orange. I think we paid $3,000 for it. We've had it now for five or six years, but it's getting to the point where it can't sustain our needs anymore. So we have a quote for the new generator, which will be about $18,000, so we'll have extra money there.
Will that, okay, will that generator be a backup, so once the power goes out, it's automatically, with it like a three-second delay?
Yeah, it goes right on.
Auto switch.
Yep, it goes right on.
Okay.
Because that only runs at the Band-Aid, right Karen?
That was a Band-Aid. It runs portions of the building. We can't use the elevator.
Right.
We can't do certain things, yeah. But this one will allow us the ability to run the whole thing. Yep. Public Works has a new generator. PD has a solid generator. So the next one that they'll begin working on for generation will be one for our first responders, so for Citizens Engine and Seymour Ambulance. But we're trying to see if that can somehow be encompassed in the work that's being done by Johnson Controls. We may have some room in there, but we have to make sure it all qualifies, so. So skipping down to town buildings, again, we put $10,000 away a year for oil tank removal. So that's money that we just keep aside if we have to take oil tanks out of the ground. We have money put aside for that. Elevators, we are looking at the replacement of three elevators, Town Hall, the Community Center, and the Police Department. The total cost of the three elevators is just under $250,000. So we have that broken out over five years. Now again, that could change based on the Community Center. Obviously, we're going to go forward with a new Community Center, we will just Band-Aid that to get us through. But for Town Hall and the Police Department, we will definitely have to move forward with those.
Is that evenly distributed across all of those?
Yeah, give or take, they're about $80,000.
Yeah, they're all, right.
Yeah. Okay, technology, we have $5,000 in for computer replacements. Again, we have the schedule that was created by Rob Dyer, Director of Technology, and we just keep moving through that. And then, and this goes to Rob, your concerns, we're going to improve the wireless communications for the town. I can't fully explain this one, but it's going to make wireless better in all of the buildings. So we have made an improvement with, while we purchased these smart boards, another part of that, not necessarily the financing, was the switches were moved. Board of Education was able to purchase new switches, which allowed the town now to take the Board of Education switches, which increased our speed tenfold. I looked at Rory, did nod his head on that. Rob said it's substantially more than what we need, but it's a good thing for us. So that brings us total to $286,815. We have $300,000 in cash put aside every year for these purchases.
I think that's off.
What?
That's more than the total?
It doesn't count, it doesn't count what's in yellow.
Oh, okay, right.
Yeah.
Sorry.
It's just the actual capital itself.
Okay.
Yeah, the road construction, building repair fund, and turf replacement are individual line items in the budget.
Got it.
Yeah, I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear.
No, I, I think I missed, even though I said it, but it was not been overlooked.
Again, the goal is to always keep the number as close to 300,000 as possible. Some years we go a little bit over, some years we end a little under. The years that were under, we just encumber the money, we move it forward, and it's available for future years. Now, the one thing that was pulled out of here, just draw your attention to the middle of page one for fire, mobile radios. We initially planned on $40,000 a year for the mobile radios. As part of the questions for the bond package, we're going to have a separate line for 1.475 million for communications for emergency services, so that'll be its own question. So if that doesn't pass, then we'll have to look at other alternatives. Again, I wanted to show you the forecasted next five years as well, just to give you an idea of what we're looking at. Some of the years are full already, others, as you can see, there are openings. There will be a focus over the next five years on our large plow trucks, our dump trucks. We replace our 550s every year, but our dump trucks, we're going to need to replace three or so over the next couple of years, so. Update policy and procedures accreditation. Al says there is a typo under policy.
Mobile lift.
Okay, all right, well, thank you, Al. Rich, maybe you can go through this. Thank you, because it seems to be some typos.
Somebody got played, Karen.
That's right, exactly.
That's right.
Karen's up there, Karen's laughing at me right now.
Yeah, no, no, no.
I wouldn't have gotten 30 seconds into this, and she would have blasted it already. So, all right, so if no one has any...
My question is just environmental, that's all.
Okay, so...
You can't answer.
Okay.
No offense.
None taken, none taken, so.
I do flux capacitor.
It's the flux capacitor question?
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure the generators were put on a new shot plan to make sure that they're not running on days that are ozone depletion days, and that they're not, that's all.
I don't think they are.
Okay.
So, all right, any other questions? At least any questions that I will understand what you just said?
Sorry.
No? All right, so at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2019-2020 capital plan as presented.
Someone?
Motion by Ann Marie, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes five to zero. And again, if we make any changes during the year, this comes back to the board, just to give you updates, just to let you know what the changes are. Okay. All right, so with that, we will move back to item number six, discussion and take possible action regarding 31 Silver Mine Road. So Rich, do you need me to read this into the record, or do you just want to?
I'll, I'll just give a description and then ask for a motion. 31 Silver Mine Road is a parcel located in the industrial park. A situation was brought to our attention approximately two weeks ago involving this particular parcel. Back in 1983, the town of Seymour, acting through its Economic Development Commission, created an industrial park in that area and recorded on the land records a land disposition agreement which governed what was going to happen there. Included within the land disposition agreement is a right of reverter, meaning the property, it could be sold if the party didn't develop it, it could be, would revert back to the town. Well, in this particular case, Mr. Joseph Ducars purchased the property, developed it, had approximately a 10,000-square-foot complex, brought light industrial use there, operated for many, many years, had equipment, employees, and paid taxes. Mr. Ducars passed away, the business was shut down, and the family put the property on the market to go forward. In 1990, so it was built, and then in 1996, permits were pulled for an addition, a small addition on it, fully approved by the town. Subsequently, Mr. Ducars passed away, the business was shut down, the property's on the market. Approximately two weeks ago, I was contacted by two attorneys who were at a closing, because there is a buyer who was and is intending to buy this particular parcel to bring another light industrial use to Seymour in that property, employ employees, and continue paying taxes on this property. There was only one small problem. They were at the closing, they were ready to close, fully funded, and they discovered that no certificate of completion had ever been recorded by the town or by the Economic Development Commission under the land disposition agreement. The land disposition agreement said basically, you got to build it, if you build it, we record a certificate of completion. Well, none was recorded. Was I shocked? No, I wasn't, because in 2014, another situation like this was brought to our attention, and we dealt with it, just like we're doing tonight. I went to the Economic Development Commission, I explained it to them, they have now voted in favor of it, they've authorized the certificate of completion. Out of an abundance of caution, I'd like to ask the Board of Selectmen to make a motion to approve the issuance of a certificate of completion.
So any questions for Rich?
Just one, sorry. How do we know, or do we know if this could be elsewhere in the industrial park, if there's any other issues like that?
Well, there's only one sure way for us to know, and I think the better way is to wait till somebody brings it to our attention, and we'll deal with it. The sure way is to commission title searches on all of the parcels, which will be some cost to the town.
Yeah.
And, you know, we certainly act reasonably. If somebody brings it to our attention, we'll do the right thing, and we'll do it as quickly as possible. We move this very quickly for these folks. So, and it looks like the closing and the deal is held up, but it looks like it's going to go through once this is accomplished. And I wouldn't be surprised, Ann Marie, if we find more, or more brought to our attention. It was developed, lots of these parcels, a long time ago, and this is like the last formality. After it's built, you issue it, and it's done. It was, in many cases, it wasn't done, I have a feeling.
And that was for the original build, not the addition?
The original, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it was for the original, and then he went forward and built an addition on top of it. That's what Jim Baldwin was pointing out to me, yeah.
Well, he built it in the early 80s, and 13 years later, he's got an addition.
Exactly. That's exactly right.
Okay.
So everybody's good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the certificate of completion for 31 Silver Mine Road as presented by Town Council.
So moved.
Wow, all right, so we'll give, we'll do Rob and Bob. Motion by Rob, second by Bob, just because that's got a nice ring to it. So, seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes five to zero. Now move on to item number eight, discussion, take possible action regarding 2019-20 salaries. As you know, every year, we need to present to this board for approval salaries of non-union folks. Those would be the enforcement officers, the Director of Operations, the First Electors' Assistant, the Human Resource Director, and the Finance Director. The Human Resource Director's position is, there's already a contract in place, but still I want to put that in front of you folks. One note for the First Selectmen salary, it says $90,000 effective 12/1/2019. That is assuming that there is not a change in First Selectmen. If that were to happen, then the amount would revert to $82,500 by the salary structure that's set in place for the First Selectmen's office. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve my request for salaries and monthly payments that will go into effect on July 1st, 2019, as presented. Motion by Bob, second by Ann Marie. Is there any discussion?
Just in case, because I know it's going to come up when people look at that. I did a little research, and with towns of this size, that's completely on par with the First Selectmen. Democrats tend to care more about the, you know, kind of look at the party less than the position.
Right.
And in this case, so I just want to make sure it's reported, and do some research on other positions around the state, and also there's some writings a couple of years ago about raising slowly, incrementally raising, so that we can get, even though he's going to be here.
So, this will be the highest it goes until the next guy, so. So with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes four to zero one. Please note my abstention, because I don't want to vote on Rory's salary. Okay. Talking about underpaid, Rory Burke.
He got paid every time you had to look at him for approval.
Yeah, I tried to look, you noticed that.
Yeah.
Look at him, if Rory's smiling, then I'm on the right track. Take a look, show him your notebook. I forgot his name. I'm sorry, I forget your name.
My notebook's Bill.
Bill, show him your notebook. He's got this, what's it called?
It's a rapid writing, it's like paper.
It's like super shorthand.
Yeah.
Because it was, well, we did, we did the Bungay dedication, he was asking me questions, and he's making like these symbols, and I'm like, what is that? It's what I was saying. Yeah, it's the coolest thing.
Yeah. See, I took shorthand in high school, that was so many months ago.
Just watching him do it, yeah. So, all right, sorry, I digress.
It was just like that, and it broke me.
All right, so item number, item number eight, discussion, take possible action regarding town planner. Have we gotten any updates?
That's number nine, not eight.
Oh, I apologize, number nine, sorry.
We have not heard back from the COG or Pullman Comley, their council.
Okay. I will be with Rick Dunn, the Executive Director, tomorrow, so I'll follow up with him. Thank you. Okay. Item number 10, discussion, take possible action regarding any MBA trail application. Any update on that?
Well, we're putting together some draft documents, and I have a call-out to Kevin Condon, my counterpart in Oxford, so that we can approach this in a consistent fashion.
Okay, so no new updates as of?
No, perhaps the next time, we'll, yeah.
But we'll just keep putting it on until you and Kevin are able to.
Thank you.
Because I think it's something we're all interested in doing, and I want them to know we want to move forward, we just need to get the legal stuff taken care of. Okay. Item number 11, discussion, take possible action regarding vaping ordinance. I was at a Board of Education meeting, June, so I believe it was April, the April meeting, and we were discussing some things about school security, and one of the things that came up with regards to everything that was going on at the eyes was passing some type of vaping ordinance. So I had asked at that point the Board of Education that if they had some suggestions to put something together, to come to the Board of Selectmen to allow us then to pass it on to the ordinance committee to go through and review. So Ed Hendricks was charged with that task by the Board of Education, so this is the information that he has put together. So I wanted to first bring it to this board, to give everybody the opportunity to weigh in if it's something that we are interested in moving forward with. Assuming we are, it would follow the normal course of action, so it would go to the ordinance committee, who would then review the language with Town Council to make sure that what we're sending back, first to public hearing, then to the Selectmen, meets any applicable statutes, and doesn't get into any, get us into any trouble. At that point, we would have a public hearing, it would come back to the Selectmen, back to the ordinance committee, back for public hearing, and then back to the Selectmen one final time. Bless you.
Thank you.
So with that, philosophically, does anyone have any issues with moving this ordinance onto the ordinance committee for review?
Nope, I think it's a good idea.
We'll skip over Al for a second. Rob?
We're just talking philosophically.
Just philosophically.
Just philosophically?
Yep.
All right, I'm okay.
Okay. What I'd ask is, all of you, if you haven't already, just go through the language, and then make, you can just send an email to me, and then myself, Ann Marie, and Stefan, when he's back from his honeymoon, we'll sit down and go through and just start the process of going through the ordinance, looking at the language, seeing what parts of this we like, what parts of it we don't. We'll come up with a little rough draft, we'll have Rich go through that part, and then we'll bring it back. But I would expect this to come back to the board for initial review, probably in August. Expect just with the holidays, we only have two meetings between now and August anyway, so I'm just not sure we'll be able to turn that around.
So we could just send a red line mark up to you?
Yep. Or actually, I'll send it to Rory, that way there's no FOI issues, and then Rory will make it available for us on the ordinance committee. So our next ordinance committee meeting is scheduled for the 25th at 5:30. So.
I thought we had one today.
No, it's canceled for today.
Thanks for letting me in.
You won't. So, okay, nothing else on vaping? Rich, anything you want to add on vaping? Okay. All right. Item number 12, appointments. We have one appointment for this evening. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointments for June 4th, 2019, as presented. Motion by Ann Marie, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes five to zero. Item number 13, tax refund, abatements, excuse me. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the June 25th, 2019, that can't be right.
I have the date wrong.
Yeah, they have the date wrong. All right, what is listed as June 25th, 2019, let's change that to June 6th, excuse me, June 4th, 2019. Because I'll entertain a motion to approve the June 4th, 2019 Tax Collector's Report as presented by Susan Boland of our Tax Collector's Office in the amount of $290.53.
I hope so that would get changed.
Motion by Bob, second by Rob. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes five to zero. Item number 14 is correspondence. is correspondence, or excuse me, transfers, I apologize. We have no transfers before us. Item number fifteen is correspondence. We have our check registers. We have a letter from Reverend Russell Lussu, just thanking the town for the National Day of Prayer. That is always held here in Town Hall, which is generally a great event. So Pastor Lussu is just passing on his sincere thanks. And then we have a letter from Town Council Richard J. Patralla, not to be confused with Richard C., to Anthony Caserta, our Director of Operations. This has to do with the lawsuit between the town of Seymour and Silver Petraselli over the sidewalk system at Chaffield-Lopresti School, and you can see all the information on that, as well as copies of the checks. And Rich, thank you for your work and effort on this. Certainly, certainly well done. Okay, so that closes.
Can you explain what the issue was?
Uh, for...
It's pretty much outside?
Yeah.
Cause Rob wasn't on the board.
It might be a little bit longer than that, but when they, when they did the middle school...
Yeah, for Lopresti.
Yes. They intended to put in a snowmelt system for the sidewalks. I think Yukon has some of them. And that's exactly right. There was no glycol pump installed, which would regenerate the system. So the, they suffered many catastrophic failures because the pipes froze and broke. So there was a conflict between the plans and the specs. One set called for the glycol pump, the other didn't. The contractor didn't put it in. And to make a long story short, we brought a lawsuit. Silver Petraselli impeded the contractor, and the contractor impeded the subcontractor, and hence, you see, there are three sets of checks there. The town has been fully compensated for the cost of the system. And on top of that, efforts were made to repair the system, and I understand a glycol pump was delivered and perhaps installed, although I'll defer to the Board of Education on that. So you may actually have somewhat of a functioning system, albeit with repaired pipes, and you were fully compensated. This is the full cost of the system.
I hope we never use glycol today. It was a bad idea.
Not my decision.
How was that for thirty seconds, Rob?
It was good.
Okay. Alright, so that closes correspondence. Item number sixteen, public comment. Is there any public comment? Okay, hearing no public comment. We'll move on to item number seventeen, Selectmen's public comment. And Rob, you were in the lead-off spot.
Yeah, you had mentioned the parade. I was very proud. I remember the Shelton Exchange Club, so every flag you saw in hand going down the Shelton Derby Parade was put there by myself and a couple of people. So then it was nice to be able to take part in that event.
You're very welcome. Mr. Bruno?
I just wanna congratulate Seymour Boys and Girls Track Teams for a great showing at NDLs, and then have states and Class N championships. Also, Seymour softball, I think they're playing tonight, right, Rob?
Playing tonight.
Playing tonight.
Right now?
Hopefully they win.
What's the score?
I'm trying to hear.
Okay, what was I gonna say?
They can win in a game.
That's right. Here you go.
Yeah, yeah. So they go to the state title game, I believe it'll be Saturday night, if they win. So, if they win, they can win stuff, win that, so, yeah.
And just to make mention, the winner of the John J. Gallagher Award in Athletics, Al Brunna. So, Board of Education, yeah. So it's a big accomplishment.
I was humbled.
Yeah.
That was a fun ceremony last night, to see the teachers that were honored, the top ten students at Seymour High. It was a cool little night to go to, and that was there last year for Cady, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hey, Al Brunna.
Ann Marie.
Um, just wanted to say that I was at the French Memorial Park for the Memorial Day Observance and the bridge. Wonder if we can get that put on our website, just to, cause people are asking that showed up, if we can put it on the website. They didn't know about it. Maybe if we can put it on a sandwich board, or put it on the school board, just what is going on for Memorial Day. You know, the parade is at this time, at this day, the French Park is at this day.
Didn't we have that out?
Was it on the community center?
No.
No, it was last, I don't know, they need something every year, open in town.
Yeah, they did, they dropped the naval wreath at nine, and then they do the service at ten. I thought we had it out there, but we'll check on that.
Yeah, I was asked about that.
Yep.
Also, just wanted to congratulate the Seymour High School children who are graduating this Friday. I will be at the attendance, as well as, it's a very sad day, just graduating and watching them graduate. I've known a lot of them. And congratulate Al for his son graduating on Sunday. Also, just to let you guys know, Public Works meeting is the second Monday of every month at Public Works. I noticed there are some things on, you know, the Seymour Moms page, or the Seymour Town page, asking questions about the Public Works. Anybody has any questions, they're more than welcome. It's open to the public. They can come down the second Monday of every month at the Public Works building. We have public comment there. And also, a lot of questions about the WPCA. We have our meetings here, the WPCA meetings are the first Monday of every month, and they're in this room. They're no longer at the WPCA, we have them here. WPCA meetings at six o'clock, Public Works meeting is at seven o'clock. And congratulations, Seymour Track Council.
Ann Marie. Bob?
No, congratulations to the Seymour softball team. They're winning quarters, they're in semis tonight. Wish them best of luck, and we'll see them in the states.
Yeah. Go Cats.
Rory, and we missed, Rich, anything you'd like to add?
No.
Okay. Alright, so again, just as a reminder, our next meeting will be on the twenty-fifth, and then again, on the sixteenth. And thank you for that accommodation, so I can watch my son graduate. So with that, I will...
Make a motion, Jerry.
Supposed by Ann Marie, second by Al. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes five-zero. Mark the meeting closed at seven-thirty-nine P.A.